We’ll now resume annual town meeting with Article 51, which has been scheduled for now to follow the special town meeting as a high-interest article, and this is Concord’s Energy Goals.
Good evening. I’m Alice Kaufman, 1615 Lower Road, member of the Select Board, and speaking on their behalf.
Ms. Kaufman.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So I want to begin by thanking—oh, wait, one second, let’s go back. The article that is printed in the warrant has been updated, and there was to have been a printout, a handout on the tables, but it doesn’t seem to be there. So we’re going to put up on the screen what the handout would have said. And I’ll see if I can—this is your handout, everybody has a copy, we are electronic this year. And I just want to make sure you are aware of the changes to the warrant article from how it was printed in the warrant. I will read it to you. I’m just pointing out—if you can see what’s there in red? It’s a little better, I know it’s small type. So in Section B, it says, “By 2030, as an intermediate goal, to urge CMLP”—CMLP is the Concord Municipal Light Plant, so that’s the first change. At the end of Section B, it has the addition of the following words, “With the understanding that this may increase the cost of energy purchased by CMLP and may require increases in electric rates,” and I’ll be talking about that in my full remarks. As you look down to the paragraph that begins with “and further,” it says, “And further to determine whether the town will vote to raise inappropriate—the funds for this project.” And it also has one more modification in that same paragraph where it calls for hiring a Director of Energy or any other title. Those are the changes to what’s printed in the article, that’s printed in the warrant in your hands. So that’s your handout for the evening, and I will address each of those as I present tonight. Thank you for bearing with us. So I think we can go back to Slide 3. There we go. “I want to begin by thanking the members of the Energy Future Task Force, who have worked for the past year on data gathering, research, planning, identifying best practices, and reaching out through open meetings, public hearings, a dedicated website, a mailbox, and being accessible to you. The work of this group of talented and driven volunteers far exceeded the Select Board’s expectations, as they delve deeply into questions of climate change, technology, energy supply, rates, and regulatory influences. They listened to citizens’ concerns and interests and conducted thoughtful, open, and transparent deliberations. I have to say thank you to Pam Hill, who was Chair of the Energy Future Task Force, and in alphabetical order, John Dalton, Brian Folds, Dan Gainsborough, Wally Johnston, and Elise Woodward. And they’re sitting close to the front, in case there are questions that I can’t answer, I can call upon them for help. The Select Board charged the Task Force to create a framework for the design and implementation of a townwide energy plan that will minimize Concord’s carbon footprint and that will be sustainable in the near and long term.” Next slide, please. “Climate change is an immediate existential threat to our planet. Nations and communities around the world are taking action to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, the main cause of climate change. Concord can actively contribute to the transformation from an economy powered by fossil fuels to an economy powered by clean energy. Concord is fortunate to own our electric utility, the Concord Municipal Light Plant. Being both local and small, CMLP may afford us an opportunity to be nimble and flexible and to become a leader in municipal efforts to reduce carbon emissions. Article 51 advances development of a reliable, equitable, and environmentally sound energy plan that assures the long-term viability of the Concord Municipal Light Plant and is integrated into two significant planning efforts underway, the CMLP strategic plan and the town’s comprehensive long-range plan. The 2015 Paris Agreement on Climate Change and the 2008 Massachusetts Global Warming Solutions Act will guide our decision-making going forward. The goals in the Massachusetts Act and proposed for Concord are, as you see on the screen, 25 percent reduction in greenhouse gases by 2020 and an 80 percent reduction by 2050. In Concord, these goals are town-wide and applicable to all sectors. Decarbonizing our energy supply is also consistent with Concord’s sustainability principles.” Next slide, please. “We’re not starting from zero. We have been making steady but slow progress for years. For example, Concord adopted an energy stretch code in our building code, which addresses the built environment, and the town was accepted into the Massachusetts Green Communities Program that set greenhouse gas emissions goals for the municipal sector. And these are the sectors when we talk about all sectors. We’ve learned from communities that have already developed low-carbon energy plans, communities like Boulder and Fort Collins, Colorado, and Boston and Cambridge and now Lexington, that our efforts can be jump-started by bringing in a qualified consultant to establish a greenhouse gas inventory and baseline reporting framework, and to build a stakeholder and community engagement process in the development of a town-specific plan that addresses every sector in the community. A new permanent position that reports directly to the town manager will help set policy and integrate the opportunities across and among town departments and with citizens and across various sectors. The Director would also be accountable for identifying milestones for measuring progress toward meeting the town’s greenhouse gas reduction goals, both now and in the future.” Next slide. “So Article 51 asks voters to appropriate a total sum of $200,000 from free cash to hire a consultant and establish a new town position. The consultant will allow the town manager to accelerate the development of greenhouse gas reduction plan while the hiring process is initiated for the Director-level position. This will give the town manager flexibility in moving forward rapidly. The new Director will be required to bring skills and expertise to do what’s not currently existing on the senior management team or not presently captured in breadth or description of any current town position. And the Director will give sustainability a seat at the table. It’s expected that the salary for the new Director position would be included in the town manager’s budget going forward. The Select Board recognizes that a commitment to 100 percent non-carbon-emitting electricity by 2030 may increase electric rates over time, although the analysis has not been completed to predict by how much or when. But Concord’s rates are now 25 percent lower than those paid by those who are served by the investor-owned utilities. That gives us some room. At the same time, conservation and planning efforts will build efficiencies, save electricity, and reduce costs. Finally, our investment now will promote intergenerational economic equity. There’s little doubt among economists that the cost of addressing climate change will greatly increase over time and will become a crushing financial burden on future generations. In other words, it’s cheaper to act now rather than to act later.” Next slide. “Meeting goals for a decarbonized future requires integrated systems thinking. We know that activities in any one sector will have impacts on other sectors and that we live part of a dynamic, interdependent ecosystem. Success will rely on close partnerships with both Concord residents and CMLP, and we know that a forward-thinking utility can reduce barriers and incentivize consumers to make greener choices about energy efficiency, energy sources, what cars to buy, and lifestyle aspirations. Through community engagement and working with the Light Plant, Concord may have an opportunity to develop incentives that encourage consumers to switch from fossil fuels to electricity from clean energy sources for heating and transportation. So the key takeaway from this presentation is that Article 51 is required for Concord to develop a multi-sector decarbonization and greenhouse gas reduction plan with support from a consultant and a new Director-level position. We’ll do that by strengthening partnerships across sectors for greenhouse gas reductions and by promoting energy efficiency in all sectors. The Select Board voted unanimously to recommend affirmative action on Article 51.”
Thank you, Ms. Kaufman. We’ll next hear from—I believe it’s Mr. Terry—from the Light Plant, from the Concord Municipal Light Board. Come on up to the podium. And while we’re waiting for him to approach, is there a second for this motion? I see that there is. Thank you.
Jim Terry, 368 College Road.
Mr. Terry.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. I’m a member of the Concord Municipal Light Plant, and I’m speaking on their behalf. The Light Board recommends affirmative action on Article 51. We’ve discussed the implications of this article at a number of our meetings. Today, energy from new, non-carbon-emitting electrical sources in New England costs significantly more than electricity generated by natural gas. However, technologies are improving the cost-effectiveness of renewable sources and viable utility-scale storage options are being developed. Massachusetts has mandated significant increases in renewable energy sources for investor-owned utilities such as Eversource and National Grid. These mandates do not currently apply to municipally-owned utilities, but shape the market for renewables for which we will be participating. Large hydroelectric power from Quebec and offshore wind projects have been proposed to provide renewable energy from New England states, but these projects, if built, will not be online for five or more years. Costs for that energy are not known at this time, but are projected to be higher than energy sources used today. CMLP has a portfolio of multi-year energy contracts with different vendors, and they expire at different times, both for fossil fuel and for renewable-source power. When they expire, staff will investigate appropriate contracts to replace them. The primary responsibility of the Light Board is to establish the rates charged to CMAP customers. The Light Board is always on the lookout for attractive renewable sources and other non-carbon-emitting sources. The Light Board supports continuing to add additional non-carbon-emitting sources to our portfolio while balancing the costs and the impacts that such sources have on rates. We intend to maintain CMLP’s competitive rate structure. We will consider acquiring renewable energy credits directly, whether another strategy available to us to increase renewable share of our portfolio. The Light Board looks forward to playing an important role in reducing greenhouse gases in our community, and we recommend affirmative action on Article 51. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Terry. We’ll next hear from the Finance Committee, Mr. Tarpe.
Tom Tarpe, 59 Westfield Drive, a member of the Finance Committee, speaking for the Finance Committee.
Mr. Tarpe.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends affirmative action on Article 51. The financial elements of Article 51 include an initial increase in property taxes by approximately $27.43 per median home in Concord, and an uncertain impact on electric rates and bills for customers of the Concord Municipal Light Plant, as well as adoption of new construction and maintenance technologies with uncertain costs and savings. As far as the property tax impacts, in its first year, Article 51 calls for an expenditure of up to $200,000 to fund a new staff position and engage a consultant to plan and administer the changes in town government required to achieve the article’s goals. In subsequent years, ongoing expenses for these functions may be reduced through cooperative arrangements developed with surrounding towns engaged in similar efforts. Regarding the CMLP rate impacts, as our energy economy moves to simultaneously decarbonize and employ more efficient technologies in appliances, lighting, transportation, heating and cooling, we may see our use of electrical energy increase while our use of fossil fuel simultaneously decreases. Electrical energy delivered by the CMLP will increasingly come from non-carbon-emitting sources—hydro, wind, and solar. An accurate prediction of the cost per kilowatt-hour for electrical energy during the transition to a low- or no-carbon system is difficult. Costs of major non-carbon-emitting generation technologies currently are higher than costs for fossil fuels, as has been mentioned, but are trending downward. This cost will be managed by the Concord Municipal Light Plant Board. Regarding building costs, the extra costs encountered to build new energy-efficient or even so-called net-zero residential and commercial structures have also been decreasing as the technologies and materials used to build them are more widely adopted by the construction industry. When analyzed on a life-cycle basis, the savings realized in the maintenance of energy-efficient buildings may more than offset the costs added by employing these new building technologies. And a great example of that is the expenditures—extra expenditures on making this very building more energy-efficient have resulted in making it much cheaper to maintain. The Finance Committee recommends affirmative action on Article 51.
Thank you, Mr. Tarpe. We’ll now open the floor to speakers, and I believe that we have someone from the Concord Sustainable Energy Commission who wishes to address us first from the floor. Each speaker will have two minutes, and the clock will display on the screen to remind you of where you are.
My name is Brad Hubbard Nelson, speaking for the Comprehensive Sustainable Energy Committee.
Mr. Hubbard Nelson, your address.
221 Shawtick Road.
Thank you.
And for those not familiar, CSEC is the Town Committee of Volunteers, working on projects for reducing towns’ energy use and carbon footprint, mainly focusing on residential use these days. And we strongly support the passage of Article 51 because it’s a good plan and exactly in line with what we work on. There’s no serious doubt that a change in climate threatens the future of people here and elsewhere, and that society’s greenhouse gas emissions are the primary cause. Reducing our carbon footprint by 80 percent from that baseline over the next 33 years is vital to our future, and there’s good news, it’s both achievable with current technology, and it will become easier with time. To make it happen will involve efforts at all levels, but the local level is the most important, that’s where we use energy, and that’s where the action is happening. People here in 2008 emitted 16 tons of CO2 on average per person through their energy use—the gasoline, heating fuel. And you can visualize that this gym—if you filled it with coal, there’d be a pile of coal about 1,000 feet high every year for the amount we use. But it’s already coming down. In seven years, it decreased by 10 percent at 2015 just by greening our electricity, which we can continue, and by switching to natural gas. So that’s good news. This article’s goal is to get down—you know, a factor of five, down to 50,000 tons as a town, but actually even down to zero if we can figure out how to do it. It may become possible over time, it should become possible. And so I think this is very exciting. We can be using renewable energy, driving cars largely with electricity, heating our homes differently, and this article is what we need with a plan and a goal to help us get there. And so our committee urges people to vote yes in support of it.
Thank you, Mr. Hubbard Nelson. Now, I’m looking for Rebecca Woodward. There you are. Why don’t you come to a microphone? Rebecca Woodward is going to speak to us on behalf of Mothers Out Front, and then we’ll go to everybody else.
Rebecca, may I put this up?
Yes.
How do you do that?
I think you can tilt that up a little bit. There you go.
Thank you. Rebecca Woodward, 295 Andersonak Hill Road.
Ms. Woodward.
Thank you. I’m speaking tonight as a member of the Concord Team of Mothers Out Front. All of us in this country are increasingly faced with profound choices regarding the kind of people that we want to be and which direction we want to go. One of the main questions of the day is whether we stand for science or do we deny those truths? The evidence is overwhelming about the ongoing harm being caused by our continuing dependence on oil, natural gas, and coal. If we continue to burn fossil fuels at the current rate, we will irrevocably damage life as we know it, and we see this harm underway already. So here we are today in a moment of profound choice. Here we are in a moment where the future and quality of life for our children and future generations truly is at stake. And the hard truth of it is, the more we delay, the worse things become. We can’t make this situation go away by ignoring it, but we can choose what kind of people we want to be by choosing to face it together with courage and with integrity. Voting on Article 51 tonight, voting yes, says, yes, we see that climate solutions are possible and available to us with collective political will, and that we want to give Concord the mandate and the resources to engage in those solutions. It says, yes, we believe in local climate action, especially when we see climate progress at the federal level being dismantled. And most importantly, voting yes tonight says, yes, we will step up to help create a healthier and sustainable world for our children while we still have a chance to do so. Our children and future generations are counting on us. Please vote yes for Article 51.
Thank you, Ms. Woodward. Microphone number four.
Bob Lawson, 90 Lee Drive.
Mr. Lawson.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I speak tonight on behalf of Concord Can. The recent presidential election dealt a severe blow to many of us. Climate deniers are now largely in control of our national government. I thought the battle is lost for the next four years, but as I witnessed the high degree of civic engagement that is going on across our land, I have realized in a way that I didn’t before, that the fabric of American democracy runs very deep. Our democracy isn’t just cabinet heads and congressmen, it’s you and it’s me. Washington can do one thing, but the rest of us can do another. And in 2017, everyone has to step up to the plate—individuals, corporations, state and local governments. And that’s where we are tonight, in the legislature of our town government. In regards to climate, we in this legislature in 2011 passed Concord’s Sustainability Principles, number one of which is reduce dependence upon fossil fuels. Then in 2013, we in this legislature passed a resolution calling for divestment from fossil fuels. We have been talking the talk, but tonight with Article 51, it’s time to walk the walk. This article means action. We are talking about spending some money, working hard, and actually getting something very concrete accomplished, and to quote Thoreau, just in a nick of time. Article 51 will bring us in close alignment with the spirit and goals established by 196 nations at the Paris Climate Summit. Even countries like Nigeria signed on. I mean, Nigeria committed itself, and yet some in Concord are wondering whether we can afford it. Tsk, tsk. 80 percent reduction by 2050, that is what is necessary for us to avoid a world that at the end of this century will be a very different place from the one we’ve known over the past 10,000 years. Our cities will be in the wrong places, our aquifers will be depleted, our glaciers, which feed the great rivers of the world, will be depleted. Soils will be depleted, soils will be blown away, coral reefs will be bleached. For God’s sake, let’s get on with it here and pass 51.
Thank you, Mr. Lawson. Microphone number three.
My name is David Trask, and I live at 30 Granby Street.
Mr. Trask.
Thank you. I would like to ask—and nobody seems to have explained—why it’s absolutely necessary to have a new staff position at the Director level. It seems to me to be possibly expensive, but also the people in the line organization, that is the town manager and the department managers under him, would be tempted to somehow abdicate and not realize it’s their responsibility to fulfill these goals if there’s a Director who supposedly is carrying that burden. Thank you.
Would someone like to address the question of why a Director-level position?
Thank you for the question. We had researched quite a bit from what worked in other communities around the country, and we are following a model that seems to have worked out well in many other communities, and that is to have a person at the table at a senior management level to be able to integrate the thinking across town departments, across what may be silos, to address every aspect of our community and within every one of our sectors. We don’t currently have the ability to do that. Each person and each Director is in control of a very specific part of the town budget and the town responsibility, but this person that we’re talking about would be integrating across all of them, and his primary responsibility is to be broad-reaching across all sectors of the community.
Thank you. Microphone number six.
Hi, my name’s Owen Schmidt, 430 Baldwin Road.
And you’re a resident of Carlisle, is that right?
Yes, indeed.
Yes. And Mr. Schmidt is a student at the building that we’re currently in, who has a great interest in this article, and I’ve given him permission to speak, so go ahead.
Yeah, I’m speaking on behalf of the AP Environmental Science Class. I think—I’m as one of the younger people in this audience, I’d like to think I have a lot of time left on this planet, and my concern is that the planet as I know it might not have as much time as I do. I think that voting yes on Article 51 would be an important step towards ensuring a safe and healthy planet for generations to come. However, this isn’t just going to benefit generations further down the line. The effects of climate change are here in Concord, happening right now, and all over the world. And I think at times it can seem overwhelming to combat an issue as massive and wide-reaching as climate change, and I think Article 51 is a small, yet very important step towards achieving that goal. Concord has long proven itself to be a leader towards positive environmental change, and I’d like to think we can step into that role again and hopefully promote similar articles in towns around Massachusetts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Microphone number three.
Cynthia Rainey, 80 Hunter’s Ridge Road.
Ms. Rainey.
Thank you. The League of Women Voters recommends a yes vote on Article 51. We support the environmentally sound use of energy resources with attention to the entire cycle of energy production. We recommend that the $200,000 authorized to be spent prudently by hiring the Director of Energy before hiring the consultant. We particularly appreciate the careful and thorough work of the Energy Future Task Force and their contribution to this article. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone number three.
Phil Villers, 20 Wits End Road.
Mr. Villers.
To be very brief, what kind of a future do you want to leave for our children and grandchildren? That is in fact the issue we’re facing. Fortunately, this is a caring community, we proved it earlier tonight. Let’s do it two in a row and plan for our future and that of our future generations.
Thank you, Mr. Villers. Microphone number three.
Alexander Lair, 94 Hubbard Street.
Mr. Lair.
I neither want to live or bring my children—
I neither want to live or bring my children into a world we are creating. With our federal government dropping the ball on the environment, the responsibility falls to us to take a stand for our future. And with a municipal light plant, we're in a very special position to set an example for the rest of the state and to show that we care about our future and our children's future. So I'd suggest that you invest in your own futures and invest in your children's futures and urge you to please support Article 51.
Thank you very much. Microphone number two.
David Stevens, Phil Farm Road.
Mr. Stevens.
Speak again, perhaps for your amusement or perhaps for truth. I don't know. You're going to have to decide that because that's how we decide things here, I guess. This whole discussion has devolved into a theological discussion, whether you know it or not. You have to decide who's God, you or the Creator who made you. Right now, we talk as if we have control of everything. Oh, we can do this. We can do that. We're going to make the world safer for our children, and we're going to, oh, we're going to be kind. We're going to save all, everybody that's threatened by our global warming, and we're responsible for that global warming. Yeah. If you believe that, you'll vote for this article. If you believe that there are some things we are not, that we are not gods, we're limited. I get beat up every time I stand up here. I'm not God, and you're not God, and a lot of you don't even want to pretend to be gods, but you act like it. This decision tonight is a microcosm of a theological question, and how you vote will tell who you think your god is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Microphone number four.
Good evening. Bill Page, 702 Lowell Road. And I guess I'd like to counter that and address the financial implications of this.
Mr. Page.
Climate action, sustainability, smart grids, smart cities, clean tech, no matter what you call it, taking action on Article 51 in the recommendation of the Energy Future Task Force is imperative. For our students, let's align our actions with the intentions and goals of young people, students who called to action the need to leave carbon in the ground through the fossil fuel divestment movement. Let's work together to really improve our environment by investing in current technology. Doing so will lead to a smarter and safer town, one that operates optimally with a more flexible and responsible electric grid, better quality of electric grid service, and more distributed energy generation. How so? LED lighting, sensors, smart meters, power storage, and microgrids are technologies that are more responsive, adaptive and flexible, leading to better quality of life and commerce for our town. Let's embrace current technology, as they have been proven by early adopters, the towns that we've already mentioned, as very sound investments, leading, lessening consumption of natural resources while allowing more economic activity. Please support Article 51. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Microphone six.
Fran Cummings, 123 Minut Road.
Mr. Cummings.
Hi, I'm not going to make any theological remarks. I'm an energy economist by trade, and the energy world is really bubbling with enthusiasm and new technology and new business models, and the, the way for us to be thinking about this is that we're joining the future. We're making the future, but we're, we're getting with the program, as it were. And there's been some question about electric rates might go up. I'm reminded of the phrase, if, if, if you think education is expensive, try ignorance. So if you think renewables are expensive, think what it's going to cost our grandchildren to protect themselves from the diseases and storms and floods and heat waves and everything else that we would be causing if we, if we don't act now. And at a more prosaic level, one of the things that's well-established in the energy business is that the cheapest thing is always energy efficiency. And so part of this program that we're voting on is a real improvement in our energy efficiency. So we're going to save, as a town, we're going to save a lot of money by, by investing in energy efficiency. And the last thing I'll say is sort of as an economist is that renewables are a hedge against price increases and price volatility. So you, you buy the renewables, the wind or the solar, you, or the hydro, you've invested in capital, and then you don't have a lot of operating cost. So you, your costs are managed and predictable, and I think that should appeal to us in terms of fiscal responsibility. So I urge everyone to vote enthusiastically for this warrant article.
Thank you very much. Microphone number three.
Earl Smith, Hayward Mill Road. I move the question.
Well, we have been discussing this for almost 45 minutes now, so I guess we'll have a vote on whether we will call the question or not. Is there a second for the motion? I see that there is. This is a non-debatable motion, and it requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of moving the question, thank you. All those opposed. I see that the motion carries by a very wide majority and actually by well more than two-thirds, and therefore we will now proceed to a vote on Article 51. With all those in favor of Article 51, please raise your ballots. Thank you. Would all those opposed to Article 51 please raise their ballots? Article 51 passes by a near unanimous vote, and I do so declare. And as pleased as you are, please do not applaud.